Welcome. I'd like to call to order the July 11th Business Meeting of the Clackamas County Commission. And with that, Administrator Schmidt, will you call the role?
Yes, Chair. First staff support today, Stephen Madcor, County Council, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, Chair Bernard and Commissioner Savis are both out of the office today at other meetings. So with that, our role call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Fisher.
Here. Excellent. Thank you very much, Administrator Schmidt. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on our agenda is Citizen Communication. So I would like to call Les Poole and Brainerd Bauer.
Good morning. So we're past the budget and we're starting a new fiscal year in July, and I see that we couldn't afford to keep a couple of the Commissioners.
That's a good way to start the meeting.
This is like the good old days when it was three of us. There you go. But we miss our other Commissioners.
And it is 7:11 today, and I thought, my God, a week's already gone by since the 4th. So I don't know if it's me or what, but it just seems like, I've got to say, it times just flying. So with that in mind, all of a sudden, it's going to be September. Next thing you know, it's 2020. And I've come repeatedly and spoken about transportation issues and about some things that have happened in Salem that are directly affected to us, we, everyone in the county. And I was down there the day that the rally occurred. I wasn't particularly planning on going. I didn't have any appointments. My schedule was open for a change, and I thought, I'm going to drive down there. And when I drove down there, I ended up, you know, like in John Belushi's parade, where you just get swept up, and next thing you know, you're in it. And I drove by the Capitol, and I want everyone to know that those people weren't there so much because they're Democrats or Republicans. They went there because government, especially those that are in control, I'll use the word "control", is imposing unreasonable fees and taxes and tolls and things on us. And the pushback that everyone knows was coming, I'm not Nostradamus. Anyone who looks at what I've been saying the last few months, I've said, "It's coming," is there. And the county's caught in the middle of it. I'm not here to say you're responsible for everything that's happening in Salem, but you're our representatives, and I think there are tens of thousands of people in this county that are very unhappy with how their money's being spent. And there's a rumor that the VRF might be going up for an initiative to repeal it, because people aren't comfortable with that process and with the fact that the VRF, the vehicle registration fee, was passed as a cure for maintenance after the gas tax was increased and the budget here went up $5 million per year, at least. People are troubled, and I'm troubled. And it's not going to go away. There's no pleasant talk that can go away. And if I show up next week or not at moot point, moot point, people are really troubled, and I bring you that message. And again, I'm not asking you to all respond. I'm not asking you to fix everything, but I'm bringing a message that apparently a lot of people don't believe is as big and real as it is. And it's not my message. It's a message from your constituents. So thank you, as always.
Thank you, Les. Brainerd?
Yes, good morning. Thank you. Yeah, I'm Brainerd from Redland Community. Probably some of you know, some don't. Yes. I'm come for two topics. One is, for the record, asking about the radar feedback signs, schedule, and I understand it's in the budget, but when and how and where placement, and also on stop lines. But as a background update, you know, we've started on the road safety topic in Redland, and it was some very severe issues. And we've made some real significant progress. And in no small part, I'm really proud of the community for changing their behavior. And we've really noticed it. Awareness, you know, we've done little things with cones and this whole topic, but it has affected behavior. The radar feedback signs reminds me every time, and it's really worked. It's actually shocked some people how well. I'd say I'm actually surprised how well. I knew it would help, but not as much as I thought. So I'm glad that it's in the budget to be installed both ways on Redland Road. But the question is, when, how, and placement, so that they're effective. And there's a bit of a concern whether or not, you know, should the community actually be able to be asked, what would you think? Where should they be placed? What would be most effective? I don't see any harm in asking, you know, a few folks in the community. But at least ask other people in the county, you know, who are involved, you know, in other departments, whether it's maintenance or so. And so placement of the radar feedback sign really works. But for the record, I'm asking for a commitment of some kind of timeframe, schedule that we get it done before the weather starts getting worse in this fall, at least. The one that we have, again, unbelievably effective. And the other topic I had raised was on stop lines on some of the roads intersecting Redland Road. And, you know, in looking more through the data, it looks like it's really a, there are seven-foot setbacks, and then there are 12-foot-plus setbacks. I don't think the data shows that there's any in-between. So it's almost as if some of the roads adjusted for the bike lane. So I have yet to hear, how is that established? How do we do those setbacks of where those stop lines are? My observations seem to indicate that those stop lines do have a substantial effect. I mean, people stay at those stop lines, even if they're way back from the intersection, but a substantial effect on the road safety. I have yet to find the data that shows, do the intersections with the big setbacks. So where a lot of them are seven feet, a whole bunch of them are 12 feet plus. And you all have the data on that. But I've yet to see whether or not they actually have a higher accident rate. I suspect it, but I don't have the data yet. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I took some notes. I saw Administrator Schmidt taking some notes. We will get back to you with some answers, and really appreciate you coming and sharing with us.
Thank you for listening.
Yes, of course. Okay, next up, Bill Ware, hopefully I said that right, and James DeYoung. Welcome.
Thank you. Well, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Bill Ware. I'm Damascus Council President. Over the period of the last several weeks, the Damascus Council accomplished the following: the appointment of a new mayor and filling vacant council seats; the appointment of a city manager and a city attorney; the passing of a city budget for fiscal year 2019 through 2020. This was submitted to the council by the Budget Committee, which included the required number of citizen volunteers. The council passed a resolution to receive its portion of state revenue from cigarettes, liquor, highway gas taxes; entering into an agreement with contractors to provide municipal services; the recognition of standing and renewed membership in the League of Oregon Cities. From its website, the League of Oregon Cities was, quote, "created in 1925 through an intergovernmental agreement of incorporated cities." The LOC is essentially an extended department of all 241 Oregon cities. Yet, in spite of this progress, there's formidable opposition to our efforts. Bill 226, which sits on the Governor's Desk as I speak, it may already be signed, is incompatible with the Appeals Court unanimous decision on May 1st, 2019, that the 2016 vote forced on the city by the state legislature was illegal. Not only illegal, but the court ruled that the city should return to resume their home rule constitutional right to self-governance. Clackamas County Commissioners are not helping Damascus, again, become part of the Clackamas family of cities. You're holding to your letter to the state legislature on May 23rd, 2019, quote, "It's not possible to restore the city to its pre-disincorporation status," unquote. The Commissioners are not accepting the ruling of the Appeals Court that confirmed Damascus's constitutional right of home rule charter by not recognizing Damascus as a city. It's difficult for Damascus to enter into intergovernmental agreements with service providers such as fire, police, and water, among others. The county's not returning city records and documents to the city. They haven't opened up a channel of communication with the mayor and city manager to resolve various funding issues and assistance in coordinating the agreements necessary with Happy Valley. I request that you recognize Damascus and work to resolve these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Excuse me. I'm James DeYoung, the newly and duly-appointed Mayor of Damascus. Recently, much has been alleged, in the media at least, that the present mayor and city council are phonies, and even that the mayor is impersonating a public official who should be investigated and criminally charged. I'm the plaintiff in the decision DeYoung versus Brown that was handed down by the appellate court on May the 1st of this year. Let me quote from that decision in part, and it was dealing with the issue of mutinous in that brief. And these are words that come from my attorney. And he contended that the charter is essentially a legal fiction, that is, the handing over, the surrendering of a charter is essentially a legal fiction, that by the stroke of the court's pen, the whole situation regarding the status of Damascus could be reversed, and that by invalidating the results of the special election, Damascus and its residents would be restored to the status quo ante, as it was before. The city would reacquire its corporate existence and related obligations to its taxpayers. The plaintiff would regain his position as a city councillor, and the residents of Damascus could resume their home rule constitutional right to self-governance. The plaintiff further contends that he and any of the other city councillors could meet and resume the operations of the city. Now, those are quotations from the decision handed down by the appellate court. Those were words that my attorney put in our brief. And then the appellate court said this: "The plaintiff is entitled to prevail as a matter of law." On three different occasions in that decision, they used those words. "The decision of the appellate court reversed and remanded the Circuit Court's decision not to grant me summary judgment in 2016 that the vote in May was invalid." And so indeed, what the end result of all of this is that that vote was declared invalid by the appellate court. That's the present law of this county and state. And as my friend here to my left, the council president, has just related, the county, among other entities, have refused, has refused to recognize us as a city, and that carries significant consequences. Now, I've offered a 10-point plan, five of which concern the county, and five of which concern Happy Valley. Our basic word in our approach to the county is reconciliation. We want to work together as a partner, again, in the county, as one among many cities that would enjoy this partnership that deals with various issues. The major issue is the $8.1 million that was transferred to the county, now declared invalid, as well as issues concerning documents and papers that the county has that will not relinquish them and return them to the city of Damascus, and many other issues. So we'd like to see reconciliation take place, but that's a two-way street. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We are through Commissioner, not Commissioner, Citizen Communication. Really appreciate everyone's comments. And we are now going to have a public hearing, and I will hand this over to Administrator Schmidt.
Yes, Commissioners, the public hearing today is a second reading of Ordinance Number 04-2019, amending Chapter 10.03, Solid Waste and Waste Management of the Clackamas County Code, adopting a food waste collection requirement for certain businesses. Evan Polk is not here. All right. So from DTD, who's going to do the presentation this morning?
I'd be happy to take this up.
All right, Stephen Madcor will kick it off, please.
Commissioners, this is a second reading of an amendment to the county code, and what it is doing, it is providing for the adoption of a food waste collection requirement for certain businesses. This is for the food scrap recycling program, which has been enforced or prepared by and recommended by Metro. They are the solid waste authority in the metro region, and there is a time period in which to adopt this, and we are running up close to it. So this is the second reading. You've been briefed on this in a prior policy session, and it is a relatively simple amendment that was drafted by Metro, circulated to the tri-county area, and this would be in line with Metro's requirement that we adopt it and have in place a program for food scrap recycling. I don't have a lot of the specific details, but I'd be happy to answer when I can.
Are there any questions? All right. With that, I will open the public hearing. Would any of them like to speak on this matter? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner Humberston. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And no one's opposed, and no one's abstaining. So that passes. I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is Ordinance Number 04-2019, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code 10.03, Solid Waste and Waste Management, adopting a food waste collection requirement for certain businesses.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt Ordinance Number 042019, amending Chapter 10.03, Solid Waste and Wastes Management of the Clackamas County Code, adopting a food waste collection requirement for certain businesses.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say.
Aye.
All right. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Administrator Schmidt, I believe we are moving on to the Board. We are, oh, I have to open, as the, close as the Board of County Commissioners, and open as the Board of Health. And with that, take it away.
Yes. So Commissioners of the Board of Health, we first have a presentation for you, reaffirming the Transportation Safety Action Plan. We have several presenters, Dr. Sarah Present, Abe Molland from Public Health, and Joe Merrick from Transportation and Development.
A point of order, Madam Chair. We're actually in recess. We have not closed our hearing.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Humberston. All right, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here, and thank you for convening as the Board of Health. I'll just wait a moment as our PowerPoint gets up here. So I am Dr. Sarah Present. I'm the Public Health Officer for Clackamas County. We have a couple of presentations today, a packed agenda for our 30 minutes. So I'll get right to it. I want to reiterate for you and for all the viewers that the Board of County Commissioners serves as the Board of Health for Clackamas County, per Oregon statute. As the Board of Health, the County Board of Commissioners is the policymaking body of the county in regards to public health matters. The County Board of Health shall adopt rules necessary to carry out its policies. The Board of Health shall not adopt a rule or policy that is inconsistent or less strict than any public health law or rule of the Oregon Health Authority, and the County Board of Health may adopt schedules of fees for public health services. So again, just to delineate the responsibilities of the Board as the public health authority for the county. Okay. So I apologize. I am missing a slide here, but I did have one slide that showed our agenda. What I'd like to do today is introduce our presenters on the Transportation Safety Action Plan. I'm then going to hand it over to Philip Mason to give you a presentation on an update of Blueprint for a Healthy Clackamas County, which is our Community Health Improvement Plan. You, the Board of County Commissioners has already adopted the Transportation Safety Action Plan, but we want to present it to you as the Board of Health in a public health framework, and I, and ask for your reaffirmation of it as the Board of Health. We have here Abe Molland, who started in March of this year as the Health and Transportation Impact Planner. This position is a shared position between the Public Health Division and the Department of Transportation and Development. His work focuses on fostering partnerships between departments and finding opportunities to incorporate a health and safety lens into our county projects. We're very excited to have Abe here, and are excited to have him present the Transportation Safety Action Plan to you as a Board of Health, along with Joe Merrick, who is our Transportation Safety Program Manager. And I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to you guys.
Thank you, Dr. Present. Can everybody hear me? Am I close enough to this? There we go. And thank you, Board, for having us here today. My name is Abe Molland. I've been here about four months, and I'm still looking for a shorter title to introduce myself with. So if you guys have any ideas about any of this, I'm all ears.
Health guy or car guy?
Health guy, car guy. Health car guy, one of those. So we're here to, we're here to talk about the overlaps between public health and transportation here in Clackamas County, and start to scratch the surface of that by talking about road safety. We're going to open with applying a public health lens, the Transportation Safety Action Plan, and finish with a request to reaffirm the Transportation Safety Action Plan as the Board of Health. So as you recall, on March 28th, the Board of Commissioners adopted the Transportation Safety Action Plan. And the goal of that plan being to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes by 2035. And this aligns with a goal from the Community Health Improvement Plan, Blueprint for a Healthy Clackamas County, with the goal of eliminating all fatal and serious injury crashes. And when you take these two plans and align them with Performance Clackamas, you start to have the building blocks to create the safe, healthy community in Clackamas County that we're all trying to create. Focus areas between overlaps of those plans include an emphasis on strong infrastructure, there are services provided by health, housing, and human services, and the interdisciplinary partnership that we've been seeing evolve between public health and the Department of Transportation over the past 10 years. So talking about some of the shared outcomes that public health and transportation are trying to address. In Clackamas County, there's an average of one fatal crash every two weeks, which has an estimated cost of $42 million per year. And there is roughly one crash that results in serious injury every three days that has an associated price tag of $11 million every year. These are estimates based from the National Safety Council, and these costs can be broken down into a couple of different buckets, some transportation buckets, some public health buckets. In transportation, we're looking at the costs associated with road repair from damage incurred during crashes or repairing vehicles. In public health, we're looking at things like medical expenses, so doctors' fees, hospital charges, the cost of ongoing treatments and medical and medicines, ambulance costs, helicopter costs in some cases. And that doesn't start to scratch the surface of the impact that it has on families from somebody that doesn't come home from a crash one evening. And then we share this again. This was the, we're starting to talk about approaches that are similar between public health and transportation, and this is the health impact pyramid that was shared during the first Board of Health meeting. And we share it again, just to drive home the fact that there are multiple levels of intervention in a public health approach. At the top of the pyramid, we have individual level interventions that are focused on one person or a small group of people, things like education and the provision of direct healthcare services. And then as we move down the pyramid, we have interventions that are affecting more, a larger amount of people. So we're talking about community groups, neighborhoods, cities, or an entire county. And these are things that change the physical, social, and economic environments, and interventions that often require interdisciplinary partnership. With that, I'll pass it to Joe to talk about transportation approaches and bring us home.
Good morning, Chair Fisher. Commissioners, my name is Joseph Merrick. I'm the transportation guy. So.
See how simple that was?
That was simple.
Difficult at all.
So as we talk about transportation, we're seeing nationally a shift from our traditional way of doing traffic safety into what's called a safe systems approach. And the safe systems approach has really four tenets. And the first one is acknowledgement that as people were prone to make mistakes, and those mistakes will lead to crashes. It's also predicated on the notion is, is that incident or that crash should not result in death or serious injury. It further acknowledges just the limits of the human body. We just take so much energy that's transferred to us before we break, and so we want to acknowledge that. And then road safety is fundamentally everybody's responsibility, especially those who design the roads. And all elements of the roadway system and really our societal systems need to be strengthened to create this umbrella of multiple protective factors. And as Abe talked about, the, our health pyramid, when we look at those safe systems approach, it fits very well together, because the safe systems approach has these elements of moving from the individual to the society. So example, our safe drivers is really focused on that individual. Safety management is getting farther down in terms of things that we do as an organization, in terms of managing safety. Safe vehicles, things that vehicle manufacturers do with respect to how those vehicles are designed, how they, how the impact zones of the car protect the occupants. And then safety culture is our groups of friends, community, businesses, organizations, that culture of safety that they bring to their activities in the transportation system. And then at the bottom, in terms of our really societal, are the safe roads, and the work that we do as the road department, the efforts that you do in terms of, and the state of getting us funding so that we can do that work to improve the safety of our roadway system over the course of time. And then there's some real integrated connections that we can really see and touch. And one of those is substance abuse. As we look at substance abuse, alcohol is still our top killer when we look at fatalities, because of how alcohol affects the body and the performance of operating a motor vehicle. And so those have a very direct relationship of when somebody is severely impaired, and that crash that occurs has very bad outcomes. And so the notion of looking at those decision points back to the initial decisions that lead to the crash gets into our public health side in terms of what was happening in that individual's life, could things have been changed differently, could there have been some kind of intervention. Health impact assessments are an important element as we look at design of our transportation system to make sure that not only it serves those elements of operations and safety, but also that that work actually benefits the health of the community. I can come up with great engineering solutions that work for the engineering side and operations, but it may not be best for the health of the community. And so when we take in that health lens, it can modify our decision-making tree, so we can actually have, still have good engineering and safety decisions, but they can further support health of the community. And then sharing data is critical. For example, as I look at crash data, I want to be able to see the outcomes. What happens longer term if, say, from a serious crash? I don't have that data in my little world of engineering crash data. But on the public health side, we have access to trauma data and other outcome data that I can say, so really, what happened to that person over time? Traumatic brain injuries are a classic example. They can affect somebody the rest of their life. And, and so that's really important to know as we're looking at how we make our systems safer. So by reaffirming the Safety Action Plan, the Board of Health really helps advance the Performance Clackamas strategic priorities, and it further advances the goals of both the Department of Transportation, as well as Public Health and Health, Housing, and Human Services. And it fundamentally helps Clackamas County lead in And it fundamentally helps Clackamas County lead in creating these safe and healthy communities. And the partnerships between public health and DTD end up, you know, they create a higher level of efficiency, but also more effectiveness of the work that we do in collaboration. And so with that, we respectfully ask the Board of Health to reaffirm the 2019 Clackamas County Transportation Safety Action Plan. And with that, we can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Humberson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. How aggressive are you being in messaging with, with respect to texting while driving? I understand from what you've said in the past that there's no definitive data as to how much, how many accidents are caused by that, but I can tell you, when I'm driving down the road and I stop at a stoplight, I can't recall stopping at a stoplight, looking over at somebody else's car, and not seeing somebody with their cellphone in their hand texting. It seems to be endemic.
Yes.
Common sense, I guess you would say, suggests that, that that's got to be a major cause of accidents.
Yeah, from a, from a non-data perspective, it seems like it because I have the same observations, a lot of people using their mobile devices. We are pretty regularly incorporating outreach around texting and driving, or texting and walking, you know, around the messaging that we do. So we're trying to continuously have that as an element. You know, fundamentally, a lot of it does boil down to those components of enforcement. And so messaging works when we have good enforcement, and so all those pieces work, work together. And I'm hoping that over the course of time, as our laws are in effect longer, and, and that we're able to change that culture. And, but obviously, it's, and the cellphone stuff is really what we consider to be a disruptive technology. It's like a new technology that's really cool, but it's, it's had these side effects, which, which is people thinking they can really multitask when truthfully, you can't multitask. Your brain doesn't do that. Your brain rapidly switches from one task to another task. It doesn't do two tasks at once.
It doesn't do it quick enough.
Precisely.
So related to that, and drinking and driving are impaired, excuse me, impaired driving, do you involve yourself with any sort of conversations at the legislative level in terms of, of consequences for that behavior? My campaign manager's sister was killed by a drunk driver about two months ago, who had a suspended license for drunk driving and never saw a day in jail. And, you know, I worked, worked in the, in the corrections field for my career, and I do believe in rehabilitation, but I also believe in consequences for behaviors that endanger other people's lives. And it just seems to me there's way too much flexibility given on those offenses. Once, okay. Twice, ought to be in jail, and it ought to be significant. And if somebody dies, it ought to be a lot more significant. But I don't, I don't think that, and I'm not sure this is your problem, but I just share my thoughts with you that there has to be meaningful consequences for certain behaviors.
And I do know in the legislature this year, there was talk about, I think it was a, it was a lower BAC, I think it was going from point oh eight to point five. I don't think it made it through. I know some states, I think, have actually moved towards a zero. And I think in terms of, of as a society, when we set those societal, societal norms, that, you know, zero should be the number. You know, if you're going to have alcohol in your system, you probably should be having somebody else drive because each individual alcohol affects them differently. One thing that we are actively doing is we work with Oregon Liquor Control Commission to do various alcohol sales monitoring, both at establishments, retail establishments, and eating establishments, to particularly around selling to youth. And so those results have been very mixed. When, when we were doing a lot of those, we get pretty good compliance. When they haven't been done, there was about a four-year gap where they weren't done, and the compliance was very poor. And so I'm hoping we can at least do our small part in doing more of those.
Okay. And the last one is not directly related to this, but as you probably heard, Mr. Brower had some issues with respect to stop lines at intersections and that sort of thing. Have you had an opportunity to engage with him on that issue at all?
We haven't engaged. Mike Besner has been primarily working on that, and so based upon the conversation today, I took some notes, and I'll circle back with Mike, and we'll probably get you some information related about the radar sign project as well as the stop line placements.
Fine. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So my question is, you know, oftentimes, you know, we're all getting older. How do we deal with elderly drivers who may or may not be, you know, there's a time when you may lose your competency to drive? Is that, is there any program? Is there any way to?
So from, from our perspective, I mean, that is on our radar because we know that the older population is, is growing as a percentage over the course of time. Yeah, we're all, I'm monitoring the driving of my elderly parents very carefully, and they know that I will take action if I feel the need.
No, I remember my little Italian grandmother's driving habits, just let me put it that way. It was a little, it was exciting upon occasion.
So, so, you know, we're keeping a close eye on that. One thing I'm starting to do in our fatal statistics is looking at those percentages of both younger drivers and older drivers. And actually, that's a really good topic as we, as we work with public health, because on the Social Services side of the House, you know, we have our programs of transportation reaching people, and we have basically kind of a transit program run out of Social Services. And so that's one of the things that we've been talking with public health, and I don't know if Abe or Dr. President, you have any?
No, I was just going to add that I do think that that sort of topic is where we can really use this partnership that we have through the different departments to our advantage. If we can get information on, you know, crashes or traffic events involving different age groups, that can then direct some of the outreach we have to medical providers who do have, you know, a legal requirement to take away drivers' licenses for their patients if they are alerted as to some things, or, or ways that we can give other education from the public health standpoint, and that this partnership of being able to understand where and how and how many of our traffic incidents are age-related will be really helpful to, to guide those efforts.
Okay.
Any other questions? Great. If not, I would entertain a motion to reaffirm the approval of the Transportation Safety Action Plan.
Madam Chair, I move we reaffirm our approval of the Transportation's Action Plan as it relates to public safety, public health. Excuse me.
Both. Second.
I amended the motion. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. With that, thank you very much. And we will now move on to a presentation of the Blueprint for a Healthy Clackamas County. And so I believe Philip is going to come join us.
Thank you. Good job. Do you want to introduce me, or can I do my thing?
Go ahead. Well, this is, this is Philip Mason. He's Operations Manager for the Center for Public Health Advancement within the Public Health Division. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Fisher and Board of Health members. I am thrilled to be here this morning to provide an update on our Blueprint for a Healthy Clackamas County. It has been officially one year since you were the first Board of Health in a state of Oregon to formally adopt a Community Health Improvement Plan for a county, and now over a dozen have followed your, your lead in this state. So very proud to be working at this county and in these communities, and very thankful for the leadership that you provide. The Blueprint for a Healthy Clackamas County, it is how we brand, or the way that we brand our Community Health Improvement Plan. It was, the name was during a community convening where someone said, so this plan is basically a blueprint of how we're going to work together to improve the health of the county. And that just stuck and became the way that we message and make this unique to Clackamas County. I'll read this, the text here, because it's important. "It's a plan focused on partners working together to assure residents enjoy equitable access to resources, opportunities, and environments that maximize the health of their communities." We went through a really robust planning process, engaged hundreds of people, partners across the whole county. We've developed what we call health equity zones, which are really intentional to get us out of the tables here in Oregon City, and going out into the communities and meeting with folks with where they live and where they work, to hear what their needs are, and to collect all that, to work with partners to prioritize it, and, and come up with actions that we can work together. We see ourselves as the conveners, as the facilitators. This plan is really intended to make sure that we're all working together and coordinated, that if we have a strong community, that all the folks that are trying to do similar efforts, if they can all have some alignment and start talking together, learn from each other, then we can make, make a big impact, and we can improve health outcomes over time as we move forward in this work. We are very fortunate that we do have some funding as a nice little incentive to have some folks show up and participate with us in a formal way. And we, we separate this from our Performance Clackamas. These, these things work in, in parallel with each other. Performance Clackamas is our internal strategic business plan. This we see as our external plan, the work that we do, knowing that we cannot, the Public Health Division and Health Housing and, Health Housing and Human Services cannot accomplish everything without partners helping. It takes a whole team to make, to make this happen. So the plan is lengthy, as many plans are. This is a nice sort of visual snapshot of what's involved. Every three years, we do a Community Health Needs Assessment with the region. It involves all the hospitals, it involves the other counties, and it involves our Coordinated Care Organization, Health Share of Oregon. We do that collaboratively, and then each agency goes back and creates their Community Health Improvement Plan. And these really are the priorities. We have the Access to Care Committee, we have the Culture of Health Committee, and healthy behaviors. And you can see the items there in terms of the priorities. Joe and Abe did a fantastic job of talking about the transportation work that's happening in this plan. I'll, I'll share that that shared position, that partnership that they discussed. I've received so many phone calls that, that model, that innovation, people asking, why? How did that happen? How did you convince transportation to do that? And I have to give Joe Merrick and Mike Besner all the credit in the world that, oh my gosh, they just came to us and said, we cannot meet our goals without the people, and we need your help. And because of their leadership and their desire to partner, that's how that happened. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that a lot of the work is happening, and there are some things that, that we're bringing partners together to work on things that are, there are gaps that need to be focused on, and we need to figure out a way to resource those. But one of the benefits of this plan is it puts it all together to showcase and highlight all the wonderful work that's happening in this county, and it shines a spotlight on it. So we, we have provided funding. The funding, the products began, began in January. Some are one-year grants that will be completed in December of this year, some are three-year grants. So I'll just briefly, very quickly go through these, so you're aware of some of the highlights of what these products are. We were very intentional in that making sure that we had different communities were being, products were being implemented throughout the counties, in that it had a trauma-informed approach, and that it worked to address health inequities, or health equity. So the Clackamas Service Center, they have been able to leverage this funding. They provide health fairs where they bring in lots of resources for the houseless community and low-income communities in the North Clackamas area. And they've been able to move from having monthly health fairs to now every other week health fairs because of these funding. Project Access Now is working with partners and the county to create what we're calling a no wrong door approach in terms of if you go to a medical provider, if you go to the school district, if you come to the county, and any of our programs, there's a different form, there's a different process, and how can we streamline this as much as possible? It's a really big challenge, but this, this project is to bring all the right people to, together and really dive in deeply to figure that out. Malala Communities that Care, they are working with migrant farm workers and the Latinx community in Malala to, to work on developing culturally appropriate and relevant materials to help them with preparing for emergencies. Next slide. Culture of Health, the Clackamas County Children's Commission, they've received funding to create pantries in Cambie and Sandy, along with a market in Barlow. Gladstone Food Pantry, this funding is helping them sustain and grow and keep the, the food pantry that they have at the school district there in place for next three years. Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation, NEDCO, they're here today and going to talk at Citizen Communication, so I will not steal their thunder. The Oregon Food Bake has received funding to do some work with Colton, Colton Helping Hands in Colton. And then finally, our Healthy Behaviors grantees, Ant Farmers Working with Youth Up on the Mountain Around Food and Nutrition. Growing Gardens is working here in Oregon City around home gardens and working with English and Spanish households. Northwest Family Services is in the North Clackamas area, working with Latinx communities on diabetes prevention. And the Oregon Trail School District, they have, they are working to create a fitness center that will be available for students and the community at large, that addresses accessibility needs and is trauma-informed at the middle school. And then Totos Intos, they are also here and plan to give, share a little bit during Citizens' Communication about their project. So we have provided 12 grantees funding. They're doing the work out in the community. We are also still convening partners on a quarterly basis to share progress, to provide space for folks to discuss what they are working on out in the community and how they can coordinate more and more together. We're trying to connect the dots and bring people together. We have also developed a new website called BlueprintClackamas.com that houses a lot of our public health data, which it takes all of the publicly available public health data, puts it in one place where you can look at different dashboards, and you can learn about the health of the communities, and you can explore and dive into that. It also allows us to have not just a static PDF plan that sits on the shelf, but you can go onto the site and you can track our progress of implementation. And it also allows for virtual meetings, and it has a message board. We have a large geography of a county, and it's hard for folks often to come face-to-face and meet all the time. So having a virtual space and utilizing technology where folks can connect offline, share materials, post documents, ask each other questions, and connect. So this is one example of a dashboard. There are over 300 indicators on the site. We continue to add more, has maps. It compares us to the state of Oregon, to the United States overall. You can really dive in here, and a lot of questions that you might have about the health of the county, you can really go in there and, and dive in. And we continue to make sure that we're not just having county-level data, but that you can really look at the more city, health equity zone, town level. So here's one example where you can see a lot of large cities, but also a lot of the smaller ones are reflected here, too. And then here are these action groups and ways that we can track progress, just to, I had a couple examples of what this looks like, so folks can join groups. We have staff that are dedicating time to help moderate and engage. We're also working with PGA to get the word out. We've started, this is a brand-new website, so we're starting with our partners and rely on them to help us get the word out and spread this out as we move forward. In terms of year two and next steps for moving this work along, as I mentioned, continuing to develop the site and getting it into the, the phones and the desktops and tablets of people. We plan to do additional outreach this fall and winter. The, the update to the Regional Community Health Assessment is coming out this fall with up-to-date data and all the focus groups that have been done in the region. And our plan is to have 10 convenings at each of the different health equity zones, where we'll bring partners in those communities together and specifically discuss the issues going on within those communities. We are continuing to convene our grantees. Internally, we're continuing to work on this plan, and how do we align it with Performance Clackamas more and more? These plans, they continue to move along, and, and as they move along and get implemented, making sure you have that alignment is a, is a project that needs tender love and care. And we're, we have this grant program, we have the County Small Grants. We've had a lot of discussions about how can we work with county administration and make sure that we are messaging and clear on which sure that we are messaging and clear on which funding is for what, and making it as aligned as possible as well. I will share that the 12 grantees that receive funding, we had Kimberly and Caroline participated on the review team, along with our Public Health Advisory Committee members. That was invaluable to have their insights and help with that work. And we're just looking forward to the opportunities moving forward of how we can better meet the needs and continue to move this work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hummerston?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. So it sounds to me like you're functioning as much as a convener of the providers rather than being a direct provider yourself. Am I assuming that, is my assumption correct?
I think, you know, a lot of this plan is H3S as well, so we do have a lot of county staff and even other departments that are helping implementation of the plan. We have some public health staff that have a role in implementation, so.
So by that.
You wear multiple hats. The staff that I oversee and am working with, we really are the conveners and the data staff and the ones that are bringing the partners together to serve in that function.
I'm trying to get a handle on how much direct service to clients, as, by that I mean individual citizens with health needs, are you doing, or is more of that being done by the partners?
Definitely a lot more with the partners. You know, we have hospitals at the table, we have clinics, we have nonprofits throughout the whole county. We do provide quite a bit of direct services within Materal Child Health. WIC, for example, is a program that we provide a direct service.
I would like to add that this, this plan really, we went into it as this is the community's plan for the entire county to be, you know, improving our health. But it also aligns with public health modernization and where public health as a discipline is going in the modernization effort, which is actually away from many of the direct services and more towards that data and evaluation and a convening role. So while we do, you know, as Philip said, we do have several programs that are providing direct services, the role of public health in our modernization law and where we're going in public health is really, is one of those as a convener, and we're, this plan is helping us to kind of embrace that.
Well, what I'm looking for is, you've identified equity zones, and I'm, from what you've presented, you've identified populations with, some populations with very specific health issues, such as Latino community with diabetes, I know African-American males with hypertension, there's different, you know, white Anglo-Saxon Protestants from England with spina bifida. I mean, there are different groups that have propensity towards different illnesses. Do you have a baseline of where we are today in terms of people's health, particularly in your equity zones, so that you can look five years from now and say, "The things that we are doing today in treatment are reducing health problems in those populations"? Because if you don't have a baseline to compare it to, it seems to me, it's rather haphazard, frankly. You want to know that the specific actions that you are taking actually are resulting in, statistically speaking, less problems.
Absolutely. So the Community Health Needs Assessment that is done every three years is really looking at various health indicators, and from that needs assessment, the improvement plan picks out the areas that really stand out as having greatest need for action. And public health, we see our role as really assuring that action occurs, whether it's us delivering it or finding partners that are the best ones to do it.
So do I understand correctly, you have a baseline to compare to?
Correct. So this plan was written based on the Community Health Assessment from 2017. In part, this is kind of an ongoing process where, so we'll have the 2019 assessment, and we can now look at that and say, "Are we making, are things moving in the direction that we want it to go or not?" And if it's not, then what needs to change? That is definitely part of the evaluation process that we follow.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hummerston. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, thank you for that. I've been always so interested in public health, and it's such an important, crucial piece of, I think, what we do. And when you talked about the blueprint, I immediately thought of the notion of blue zones. So can you, does that kind of whole notion of blue zones help inform kind of what our plan is, and maybe you can tell us what they are? I'm assuming you know.
I am very well aware of the blue zones. I would not say I'm an expert at all. I know that Washington County and the city of Towahltown work to be sort of recognized as a blue-zone community. It has a lot of those sort of environmental health, walkability, there's going to be experts in the back that are probably just rolling their eyes. I mean, we can get you a lot more information about that. I think that recognition program for local communities, there's also the Heal Recognition Program, which is healthy eating, active living, that three of our cities have achieved, you know, but we have a lot more cities than that. So I think there's lots of opportunities to engage local communities in some of these best practice, promising practice, programs and initiatives that we can partner with them on.
Yeah, because what I, the little I know, and I've read a little, so again, I certainly am not an expert. It really has to do with diet, movement, actually, purpose. People feel that they have a purpose, and if they are embedded in a community, at least that seems to be some of the preliminary things I've read, that are indicators of longevity and health, at least from some of that research. And I'm assuming that, again, we're moving and obviously moving in that direction with this project, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. One question that I had, you talked about when you were going through all of the different grants, and there were the lists, the first one was Clackamas Service Center, and you said that there are health fairs that are happening there. Could you just dive a little deeper and give me just a little bit more information about what those look like and how they're utilized to help our houseless population?
Sure. So that is a great way that social services providers from all sorts of agencies can come together. And I know Deborah Mason, the Executive Director there, works very hard with her team to put these on and coordinate them, but all sorts of different services and referral opportunities. Dr. President Emy Billis shares some of the examples. I know that, for example, Outside In is there and provides services, some medical providers, a whole bunch of folks. I mean, I think they would love to also have if a board member was ever interested in stopping by one of the fairs, I think they would absolutely love that.
I think I would like to do that. That really sounds interesting, so. Well, thank you. Is there any other questions or any other comments on this? And if not, we will open the public comment portion here. And I have two cards. I have Karen, is it Karen Saxey? Karen Sax and Eric Johnston.
I see. Interesting.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Fisher and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Karen Sax, and I work at NEDCO and will am at Neighborhood Housing Services. As a newly awarded grantee under the Blueprint Grant, we're excited to explore the intersection of health and housing in Clackamas County. We know that access to safe, affordable housing stabilizes our community, especially those most vulnerable amongst us. Our program aims to work with at-risk youth, many of whom are former foster youth, as they transition into adulthood and are needed, are in need of housing and supportive services. In 2017, over 11,000 youths spent at least one night and one day in foster care in Oregon. And in Clackamas County, over 200 new youth entered the foster care system during that same time. Because this population lacks many resources, including rental and credit history, cosigners and family supports, they have been systematically excluded from the traditional housing system. And we know that this type of instability results in a higher utilization of emergency health services in the criminal justice system. A recent study that included Oregon found that health-related supportive services and other non-medical interventions that address the social determinants of health can both improve outcomes and reduce overall healthcare spending. This is exactly what your support is helping us to do. We are launching a comprehensive program that works directly with youth to navigate and secure housing, as well as healthcare, education, employment, and other social services. We see firsthand the value of upstream interventions, and we know that providing service integration and navigation for youth at this moment of transition will greatly improve long-term social, emotional, and physical health outcomes. By leveraging our Continuum of Care Award from the county, our newly hired bilingual youth, health, and housing navigator will help stabilize youth and housing and provide wraparound services through a trauma-informed approach. In addition to youth who receive housing assistance, we will also work with youth on waiting lists to ensure that they can seamlessly transition into stable housing once units become available. We are excited to increase the network of youth service providers, and will create a resource guide specifically for youth in Clackamas County. We see this as our first step and envision opportunities for affordable housing development for former foster youth in Clackamas County. We are eager to replicate our successful housing and services model in Lane County, which currently provides housing for 12 former foster youth, and is slated for an additional 12 units within the next year. We know that we all thrive when our neighbors are happy and healthy, and we truly appreciate all of your work to make this a reality for Clackamas County and for your support for opportunities like Blueprint. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good job.
Eric?
Hello, my name is Eric Johnston, and thank you very much for having me here today to speak on behalf of the Blueprint Grant. We're, our zone, our health equity zones are in, I got staff housed at the Malala River Middle School, Estacada Middle School, Sandy Cedar Ridge Middle School, and Canby Baker Prairie Middle School, as well as the elementary schools in Sandy, Estacada, Malala, and Canby. The six schools that we're talking about exclude the Malala and Canby Elementary Schools, but we do do a Healthy Behaviors grant we receive from the Blueprint to provide physical activity, nutritional training, and lesson screen time. But before I could talk more about what we exactly do with the Blueprint funding that we get, I want to talk a little bit about our Totos Santos delivery at the schools. My staff are full-time at the schools with other staff working under them, and we do a variety of different best practices and services, such as service learning, service to careers, Girl Circle, Boys Council, robotics, academics, you know, and the list goes on and on and on. So for us to have a grant like the Blueprint Grant, Healthy Behaviors, you know, I was a physical education instructor, I know what it's like to have an intramural program and whatnot, and you have all these kids come out that are enthusiastic about being physical. But what we're working on is identifying those kids, you know, as a physical education instructor, those are the ones that are against the wall. They're the ones that if they're sweating, they think they're bleeding, you know? And so how do you, how do you get those kids involved in activities? And so by having staff in those schools, they know who the kids are. We do case coordination with the schools, we have direct conversations with the counselors, so we know who those kids are. And in other activities that we've had, like Boys Council, Girl Circle, whatever, we've developed relationships with those youth. So the idea is, how do we get those youth into a setting where they can, you know, enjoy their physical self? And they may not have had a lot of experience, or they might have been intimidated in the past about how to explore that physical self. So gathering them into a group, you know, and not necessarily just a group of those youth particularly, but a larger group that can encompass what it's like to appreciate the physical. So working with our partners, Oregon Ask, we have a curriculum that they're using at the elementary school called the Catch Curriculum, and we've incorporated that with our play groups and family engagement nights. And it also works with the parents to work with their children on how to lessen screen time and what nutritional value means in food and how to maintain a physical activity. And with the middle schools, we're working with Oregon Ask, and we're being trained right now on a curriculum called the Walking Classroom. And that's a classroom where we actually got funding to get pedometers for these youth to walk around, and they document their physical activity and their heart rate, you know, how many steps they took that day. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for our panel? I really appreciate you coming and sharing, because it's really the on-the-ground stories of what's happening in our communities that makes such an impact, and for you to take the time and come to share means a lot, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, if there's nothing else, as the Board of Health, I will close us as the, recess us as the Board of Health and, what was that?
It is adjourned.
It is adjourned, and reopen as the Board of Clackamas County Commissioners. And with that, I believe we have a somewhat lengthy consent agenda, so take it away, Mary.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a subrecipient professional services agreement with Outside In for HIV testing and counseling services, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement with Oregon Health and Science University for the Oregon Care Coordination Program, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services Aging and People with Disabilities Division for the provision of the Oregon Money Management Program in Clackamas County, approval of a professional services agreement, Amendment Number Four, with Mount Hood Home Care Services to provide Oregon project-independent in-home care for Clackamas County residents, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services Aging and People with Disabilities Division for the provision of the no-wrong-door services to Clackamas County residents, approval of an intergovernmental agreement, Amendment Number Four, with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services Aging and People with Disabilities Division for the provision of services to Clackamas County older adult residents, approval of Agreement Numbers 1-8575, 1-8576, and 1-8577, and Modification One with Ride Connection to provide funding for rides provided by social services, transportation-reaching people. Approval of Agreement Number 1-8574, Modification One, with Ride Connection to provide funding for rides provided by members of the Clackamas County Transportation Consortium. Approval of Agreement Number 1-8573, Modification One, with Ride Connection to provide funding for specialized service ride provided by members of the Clackamas County Transportation Consortium. And Approval of Agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation, Rail, and Public Transit Division for 5310 Enhanced Mobility Funds for preservation, maintenance, operations, and replacement vehicles, funding for the Mount Hood Express Transportation Reaching People and Transportation Services to Boring. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a federal lands-access program, project memorandum agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division for the Lolo Pass Road Stabilization and Surface Preservation Project, approval of a federal lands-access program, project memorandum agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division for the East Salmon River Roads Surface Preservation Project, approval of a contract with National Safety Council for the Purpose of Safe Systems Approach to Rural Road to Zero, approval to apply for a build discretionary transportation grant to replace the bridge across the Bull Run River, approval of a contract with Pioneer Truck Weld to retrofit hydraulic systems for the new plow system. Under Finance, a resolution creates a class special procurement process for the 340B Third-Party Administration Claims Management of Pharmacy Services. Under Elected Officials, a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office to apply for a grant with Clackamas Women's Services and Family Justice Center Services via New Pathways of Hope and Healing for Poly Victims. Under County Council, a board order related to a previously approved Zone Change Application, a removal of a historic landmark designation Z0067-19. And Gary's going to take it from here.
Yes, under Business and Community Services, approval of an allocation-certification agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board for Maintenance Assistance Program 2019-2020 Funding. Under Technology Services, approval for a service-level agreement with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the lease of dark fiber connection. Under Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Division for the Community Diversion Program. Approval of Amendment Number Four to the intergovernmental agreement Number 931488 with Metro for litter pickup near the Metro South Transfer Station. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Education Service District to provide education and vocational opportunities for at-risk youth. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Clackamas River Water to provide work crew services for fiscal year 2019-2020. I've done this before, Commissioners, I'm good at this, thank you. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement. Under Community Corrections, Approval of an Inter-Governmental Agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Clackamas River Water to Provide Work-Crew Services for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. I've done this before, Commissioners, I'm good at this, thank you. Approval of an Inter-Governmental Agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and the City of Wilsonville to Provide Work-Crew Services for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Approval of an Inter-Governmental Agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Clackamas County Fair Board to Provide Work-Crew Services for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Approval of an Inter-Governmental Agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Clackamas Community College to Provide Work-Crew Services for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Approval of an Inter-Agency Agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Milwaukee Center, and Health, Housing, and Human Services for Social Services Programs. Approval of a Grant Agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board as Part of the Maintenance Assistance Program for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Approval of a Service Level Agreement with Clackamas Broadband Exchange for the Lease of Dark Fiber Connection. Approval of an Inter-Governmental Agreement with Clackamas Education Service District for Internet Service. Under Water Environment Services, Approval of an Inter-Governmental Agreement between Portland State University and Water Environment Services for Water Quality Model Updates. Approval of a Public Contract between Water Environment Services and Lucidity Incorporated for Constant Connection Program Annual Support and Maintenance. Commissioners, that is the consent agenda.
Wow. Bravo. Yeah, that's a lot of government right there, a lot of getting it done. That's what you call that. So thank you. With that, I will ask if any Commissioners would like to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda. Any questions or...
Just one comment, Madam Chair. I just note that Clackamas Broadband Exchange continues to move forward and be a profit-making enterprise for our county.
Great. All right. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. It passes. Excellent, and moving right along. Are you able to speak Administrator Schmidt, or is your tongue tied from all of that?
My tongue is tired. I have, I have some good news to share, but I can condense it if you are in an urgency to adjourn today. Do you have a rush to conclude today?
Yeah, I think you go ahead and talk.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Good news to share, Clackamas Dogs Foundation raised more than $22,000 at its annual Putz for Mutts fundraising event in May this year. The foundation supports programs for Clackamas County dog services, which provides dog sheltering, stray care, adoptions, and lost and found services. Thank you to everyone who attended and supported this worthwhile cause to support our furry friends. From our Health Centers Division, since October of 2018, our health centers, in partnership with the Oregon Food Bank, began offering a free food market at our Beaver Creek Health Clinic located right here on the Red Soils campus. With the goal of helping to feed local families who struggle with food insecurity, the market has seen a 50% increase in the number of households served from October 2018 to now. We know that the growing success of this market is due to two significant reasons. First is the addition of a new partner, Oregon State University's Extension, Oregon State University Extensions Food Hero Program. And the second is that shoppers can now take the food items home and the amounts they know their families will eat, rather than taking just one of each item offered. So this change has provided enough food for everyone. So thank you to our fantastic staff and the community for working together to feed local families. We heard a lot about small grants today, a reminder to the community that the Clackamas County Small Grants Program is now open for the fiscal year 2019-2020. There is $250,000 available for small grants. The goal of the Small Grants Program is to help our most vulnerable families, seniors, and others meet their basic needs, such as food assistance and abuse prevention. Priority will be given to projects, projects serving the Clackamas County Community Prosperity Collaborative Areas, which include Canby, Estacada, and Milwaukee, although efforts will be made to disperse these grant funds throughout the entire county. Applications are due by August 15 at 5:00 p.m. More information can be found on our county website, there it is, clackamas.us/bcc/smallgrants. And further information can be obtained by contacting Caroline Hill, whose phone number and email is there on the screen. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader, do you have anything you'd like to share today?
I will try and be reasonably fast here. I know that Commissioner Humbertson and I and Commissioner Bernard attended the Open House at the new Clackamas Corporate Park. That is our CAPS Road site, or otherwise we called it Chow for many years, and the reason eludes me, but it stands for something. The good news is that it's a wonderful facility. It's open for business, and I believe that Pepsi is going to be moving in, I think, to a portion of it and other businesses, and it's part of our agenda as a commission to really build and give opportunities for our businesses to move in here and expand and create prosperity and jobs for our citizens here in Clackamas County. I also, from there, went to the Willamette Falls Locks Commission. We are continuing our efforts to unlock the locks. The conversation actually focused, this go-around about, around actually forming a public corporation is one of the, one of the missing pieces, where there can be a there, there for the long-term ownership and maintenance of the lock. We are crafting legislation for the short session to move that forward, and there will be continually more to come on that as we continue those efforts. And then also, I chaired the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Council last night. That is the Land Use Advisory Commission to Metro, to our metro government, and we had some really good, actually, conversations about sustainability and health, very similar to the conversations we had today. So, also, word of the week, let's do that. Elusive, it's an adjective. Difficult to perceive, comprehend, or describe. Did you know? An elusive issue or point is one that would require real work to grasp completely. We encourage every student to continue reading over the summer so that their schoolwork does not become elusive in the fall. Want to thank Gary for continuing, don't let me do this here with words, okay? Arts and Culture Activities in the County, the Three Rivers Artist Guild's Artist Reception, that's going to be inside the Singer Hill Cafe in Oregon City. Meet the New Artists Displaying Their Art for July and August, and it's a perfect place for that one-of-a-kind gift or something for yourself, and complimentary appetizers and coffee, Sunday, July 14 from 1:00 to 3:00. The Gin Game, presented by New Century Players, Saturday, July 13, 7:30 p.m., and Sunday, July 14, 2:00 p.m., Rose Villa Performing Arts Center, Milwaukee. Weller Martin is playing solitaire on the porch of a seedy nursing home. Enter Fonzie Dorsey, a prim self-righteous lady. They discover they both dislike the home and enjoy Jim Rummy, so they begin to play and to reveal intimate details of their lives. Go to clackamasartsalliance.org for more information. Actually, Clackamas Repertory Theater is getting rave reviews for their Robin Hood play Sherwood. You saw it the other night, you saw it the other night? It was great. I haven't seen it yet. And I believe that Matilda is opening up July 12 at Lakewood City. It's Matilda the Musical, based on the book by Ralph Dahl, the children's author. And I always wonder what Kirk's doing, because he's in.
Oh, yeah. He's just getting ready for the fall, getting ready to open West Side Story. So, yeah. Thank you for asking. All right. Commissioner Humbertson, I believe it is your turn now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to piggyback on Commissioner Schrader's comments about the CAPS Road project, that was an old gravel pit and pretty much of an environmental mess. It is now a corporate park that will employ many people, and in the peripheral areas around the corporate park, they've done some interesting environmental improvements also. So, a lot of work by staff over a long period of time, but it was really nice to see that come to fruition. Let's see, attended the city's dinner in Milwaukee, went to the Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue Transfer of Command Ceremony. We have a tendency to forget that Tuolton Valley and Fire covers the west side of our county. It's not just Clackamas Fire, but also them, and let's make sure we keep an eye on them also. Went to the Port of Portland for a tour with Commissioner Fisher. We don't think about it all the time because it's in Portland and it's not in Clackamas County, but we have Clackamas County people who work there. We have a lot of agricultural products, both from Clackamas County and the rest of the state, that go through that port. We have a lot of trade between us and other countries from that port. And just to give one example, we do about $6.8 billion worth of trade with China, with whom we have about a $2 billion surplus. So that port is much more important to Clackamas County than we oftentimes realize, and it was a very interesting tour to see their facilities and the plans going forward. Obviously, for everybody, we all attended a variety of different Fourth of July events and had a good time with friends, family, barbecue, parades, and the whole bit. It was, it was a good, good holiday. And on that note, I will move to the dogs. Here we go. This is Astrid, and she can't wait to meet you. She's a shy gal, so please be patient with her. She will do her best in a home that is relatively quiet. She's not too keen in a busy household. She would do best in a home with adults only. A nice soft bed near you would be perfect, and hopefully a nice walk every day. Please come meet Astrid today. For more information about Astrid or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Astrid's pretty cute. I wanted to share a visit, site visit that I did, I think that was yesterday, actually. Yes, yesterday, Wednesday. Some days are, do you find that, some days are days? We do so many things every single day, it's hard to remember what you do on which days. But there is a new nonprofit here in Clackamas County that I don't know if that my colleagues are aware of, because I was not aware of this effort, and so I wanted to make sure that I shared. It is the Family Promise of Tuolton Valley. And this is a day shelter for homeless families. And it is located on, right near, do you know where Rolling Hills Church is, on Borland Road in Stafford? So it is located just off of Stafford Road, there is a house there that is used for a day shelter. And I have Mary going to just throw some pictures up for, for folks to see as I talk about it. But basically, the model of this nonprofit is, this is a part of a national affiliate, there are 200 around the country in 43 states. This is serving Washington County and Clackamas County. And the idea is to have a place for houseless families to go during the day if they need to, have a home base, but they are hosted by different hosts for two weeks, and they rotate the families. And the families, they've been very successful in getting families that have come to them into housing. They work very closely with Washington County and with us to find housing. There were, when I was visiting, there were many stories of, most of the families that are served basically hit hard times, they're working families, they just need to recoup their individual resources to get their deposits and their first-a-month last rent saved so that they can get housing. They have intensive case management services, and they are providing a pretty amazing resource to our families. Sometimes we don't think Lake Oswego and Washington County are areas where children are struggling with homelessness, but, but they are. Some of the numbers that Family Promise has put out, that in Washington and Clackamas Counties, there are over 100 families on waiting lists, that Oregon children experiencing homelessness score about 28% lower on reading scores, that graduation rates of children who are houseless are 50%, which is very, very low. And last year alone, there were 300 children in Tiger, Tuolton, Lake Oswego, and Sherwood School districts that were affected by housing instability. So this group is newly established, they had their first kickoff fundraiser June 1, where they had a park-in, where they had a parking lot of a school, and families actually slept in cars to raise awareness of what it's like for homeless families out there to deal with houselessness. And this is an issue that I know that we all care about and that we're on, but I wanted to share this nonprofit. I encourage you to visit, to go by and visit. Rose Money is the new executive director, she's doing a great job, and there's a lot of passion and commitment to serving folks in our community. And also, wonderful collaboration of a lot of community partners. This nonprofit was the recipient of one of our small grants, and we, that small grant was able to leverage other grants. They have rent that's donated from the church, they've received a lot of community support, and they are off and running. So...
So are they going to look for eventually, I think, other sites as well? Hopefully?
You know, MACG Cecil was there as well, Cecil Denny, who's also part of MACG, and we've already, Mary Jo has been in contact with Nancy Ide with our Clackamas County homeless coalition and with other partners to talk about this and really working to connect, connect the effort. So it's a good model, it's working, and we'll see what else we can do. So, yeah, just wanted to make sure I shared that with you. And with, if nothing else, I believe that Commissioner Schrader, Commissioner Savis, and I are off to our National Association of Counties Conference. We will be back next week with lots of new information and ideas, looking very forward to that, because we always learn a lot and connect with our colleagues around the country, and come back with a little bit of inspiration, I believe. Yes.
I always bring back literature, too.
Oh, lots of literature.
Keep everywhere for people to look at.
Lots of information. And so with that, if there's nothing else...
Commissioner Bernard will make sure everything gets done that needs to get done and hold down the fort.
That's right. And you too. With that, we are adjourned.